The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on Tuesday, January seventeenth. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Does everybody had a chance to look those over? And do you, if there's any comments or questions on those? Now's the time. Okay, hearing nothing. Take a vote on the approval of the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We do the town administrator's report, report and hear from LaShelle.
Okay, so um, you know, we have meeting last month, so we, our town council meeting in December. Um, we had the quality of our homes, a little bit of a change in their phasing plan. And that will be coming back to you all to relook at their final site plan for phase one. Um, we had decided that it would be better because we're putting the well and the water tower in at the back of the property. Um, originally it was the twelve houses up front were going to be part of phase one. But now they're not going to do that. It's going to start in the back with the townhomes. And because they're going to be putting the road all the way in back to the water tower. And um, they don't want to be voting the houses up front and having all the construction traffic going by those houses during the whole project. So it'll be coming back to you because what we had in the original phase one, final site plan that you already recommended approval for, has to go back to the drawing board and be reapproved because they added some townhomes back there. So you will be getting again, but the council did approve the change in the phasing. Um, and we will bring that back to you whenever they get those ready, plans ready. We also awarded the Funken Bolton, Bolton, the engagement letter on the wastewater treatment plant, uh, expansion problem, project that we're working on. Funken Bolton is going to be our bond counsel for the financing for that. And then one of the projects you'll hear today is Southern Maryland Orthopedics Facility. The council approved EDUs for that project to move forward. And so then you're going to hear the concept plan today. And then the St. Mary's Nursing Center that you've seen a number of times in different phases through the project. We had originally given them ten point nine one acres of road allocation for the critical area. And it was, they came back to us and said that they needed an additional one point seven six acres. The uh, critical area commission did, the, of the way they had to calculate it. So we approved an additional one point seven six acres of our two hundred here acres of road allocation that we currently have for the town. And then in January, we introduced the ordinance for the proposed borrowings from the Community Development Administration for the wastewater treatment plant expansion for up to nine million dollars for that project. And that will have a public hearing at the February meeting and will be taking action on that ordinance. We also accepted phase three of the Clark's West Streets. Um, we have already taken over phase one and two. And then we also approved the third phase of the downtown and waterfront plan with Mayhem rifle, rifle and Hanat Maldro. So we're going to actually, they'll actually be in town tomorrow for their first visit. And we will be looking at in more detail the plan, what they had proposed at the warp, which was for the carousel, the splash pad and the food hall. So we'll be taking that to the next level so we can put that out for an RFP. We'll also be really focusing on the um, main street application we're going to be putting in and retail improvement. We will have a nice professional retail improvement package whenever they finish this phase of the plan, which is kind of what it's building for, building up to with the downtown plan and other phases. And so we're excited about that and we're going to probably roll that out at the state of the town this year, which is usually in March. Um, so we'll let you know when that gets scheduled. And then um, we all, I also announced that we did receive a fifty thousand dollar Maryland Arts Council grant for two um, arches. One that says waterfront district that will be right by the courthouse as you're going down the hill on Washington Street. And then another one that says downtown district as you're entering on Fenwick Street as you come up into a by social. So we're really excited about that. And we do have a local artist, Billy Gibson, who's buying the Bell Motor Building is the artist that one knows um, probably our, um, RFPs and he will be building those orange ways. So we're really excited about that. And then I just, a couple of other little notes. Um, we did receive a notification from State Highway that there was a traffic signal approved at the Leonard's Grant Hollywood Road intersection. It takes twelve to eighteen months for those projects to come to fruition, but we did receive notification that it was approved. So that does impact one of the projects that you'll see today, um, which more than likely that signal would begin before their project, the Southern Maryland Orthopedic Facility would ever um, be over. And so that's good news for that intersection. And then I just wanted to, last time when Dairy Queen was here, I know there are some people who don't really understand that we cannot pick and choose what um, chain restaurants that we allow in town. You just have to, just a reminder that if it meets the zoning, then you really cannot stop it just because you like one franchise and you don't like another or for some reason. We hear a lot and we talked about it a lot when they were here, the concept plan. They meet all the criteria and unless you change the zoning and you know, there's really um, not, you can't pick and choose what um, projects you let go into if they need the zoning. So I just want to remind everybody of that. Um, I think that you'll see a lot of effort that's been made today with their architecturals and trying to help it run in better. Uh, you just have to consider the fact that they do make the zoning and there's not, you can't just pick and choose. And that's all my soapbox.
Thank you, LaShelle. Does anybody have any questions for LaShelle?
I do, um, too. You mentioned the wharf, um, the carousel and all that. Is that trail over to the winery? Is that included in that or is that a different project?
It's still part of what the consultants recommended. What we're going to do is um, section by section, we'll be taking those plans to the next level. So the, the pathways are not what we're going to be working on right now. It's, it is still planned. Um, Don Pleasant, they got, uh, the um, company that owns part of the Chico Hall property that those um, trails go through, uh, is going to be coming forward very, very soon with his concept plan. So until that kind of starts moving forward, we wouldn't want to really bring the next level to those trails. But the wharf is really ready to go um, for development now. And so that's why we chose that particular part of the project to go ahead and take to the next level.
Gotcha. And then my other question, and sorry, the, you know, first time, new guy.
New people only get one question.
They can have my other one.
Thanks, sir.
With, with the um, with the Dairy Queen, um, was there, was there like a traffic study done?
Yes, there was.
Is that something I could have access to just for my own benefit?
Um, yes, so that was sent out the first time with the concept.
Okay.
And Mike can send that.
Okay, absolutely. Cool, thank you, sir. That's all for me, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, LaShelle. Uh, next is our new business and we'll look at our first case, which is case number eighty-three twenty-one Dairy Queen Final Site Plan Approval. Uh, they're requesting final site plan approval for twenty twenty, twenty-two eight seven five Washington Street.
Thank you. Uh, and welcome, Sean, to the commission.
Thank you, sir.
So case number eighty-three dash twenty-one is the Dairy Queen requesting for final site plan review and approval. The owner is Birch Oil Company Incorporated. The surveyor is Little Silence Rest Incorporated and Darren Jones and Wayne Hunt will be representing the client. The property is two two eight seven five Washington Street. It's tax map one twenty-seven, grid twenty-two, parcel two eighty-six. The land area is one point two seven acres and it's zone commercial business. The applicant is requesting final site plan approval to construct a two thousand six hundred sixty-two square foot Dairy Queen. The property currently contains a three thousand one hundred twenty-five square foot car wash facility, which is proposed to be demolished. The con, the consultant has revised the architectural renderings, which I, have been included with the staff report for your review and approval. The applicant submitted on December twentieth, twenty twenty-one, a concept plan providing forty-two parking spaces and eighteen stacking spaces for the drive-through. Staff believed at that time that the stacking spaces were more applicable to this site than the parking spaces recommend, recommended, accepting the re- reduction of eleven regular spaces in exchange for the thirteen extra stacking spaces over the required fifty-three spaces. The consultant since revised the concept plan to address concerns about travel lanes around the proposed site for ingress and egress. As a result of the revision, the parking spaces allotted for this project have been reduced to a total of thirty-nine spaces with an, an additional reduction of three spaces. The staff has met with the consultant and has communicated with the other, oh, with the owner, our concerns in reference to the additional reduction in parking spaces. The owner intends on constructing with the participation of the community bank, an additional eight overflow parking spots along the existing twenty-two foot common driveway easement, which is adjacent to Lawrence Avenue. The additional eight spaces would bring the project up to a total of forty-seven spaces. The consultant and owner would like to obtain approval for the existing plan and address design of the additional eight spaces as a revision, allowing the project to continue to move forward. The truck, project has been reviewed by Seoul Conservation District, Department of Public Works and Transportation, State Highway, Leonard Town Volunteer Fire Department. To date, approvals have been received by all required agencies. The planning department had three minor comments that needed to be addressed. These comments should not hinder the approval process of this project. To date, the planning department has not received an approve, approval from the fire marshal for architectural plans for the proposed Dairy Queen. These plans are not needed for final site plan approval. However, building per, the building permit cannot be issued until such time that the fire marshal issues a letter of approval for construction of the proposed facility. Action needed today. The applicant is requesting final site plan and architectural plan approval for the construction of a two thousand six hundred sixty-two square foot Dairy Queen. The planning and zoning commission can vote to approve, approve with conditions, delay or deny a decision. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
All right, questions?
Um, just a, a comment, um, on the, um, we talked about the architectural renderings last time y'all were here and, and you've made some changes. Um, and I, I do think that they're improvements. I think, I think um, uh, it looks more like uh, what we want a building to look like at, at the entrance of Leonard Town there. Um, the only comment I would make, uh, on that, I, I was looking at, at your, uh, the Charlotte Hall Dairy Queen and, and then the architectural renderings of this one. And the Charlotte Hall one has a more substantial, uh, the stone thing, uh, in the front. Um, is a little more substantial and goes up higher. That, I think that looks better, but, but that's not a reason to, uh, you know, for me to vote no on, on approval today. But just, just for your consideration, um, when you look at those two buildings.
Did you have any, you want to present on?
Are you going to answer a question?
I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
I think I do. It's, okay, so from the last time, and I'm the new guy, um, we rearranged kind of the parking situation, right? To accommodate more drive-through?
Yes.
Um, can you kind of? I, I'm cool talking off, off this one too, if you'd like. But while, and while you're.
They're going to get the uh, plans drawn up on the big boards. Everybody else out back here can see as well.
Okay, excellent.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I prefer to have them up on the big board so I can point exactly. I think I know what your questions are and then it'll just be easier to sort of, something better than.
Sounds good, appreciate it.
Do you have any other questions I can mention before that?
I don't think so. My other question is probably for LaShelle. It's more of a, just for my own edification. I'll ask the group and then I can ask her when she gets back. But um, so I know that you've done some different work on the facade. I wonder, has there been any discussion, um, and we were talking about this just a little bit before we started, um, around the town about having a townwide facade that when new businesses come in, they kind of match, kind of like they do in Dunkirk? Have you, are you, are you familiar with what I'm talking about? There's a couple of towns I've been around where, um, like when a franchise comes in, they'll do limestone on the outside, then everybody does limestone to kind of match. Is, has that been part of a conversation?
So being new, uh, I would tell you that I have not been part of that conversation. Uh, we probably need to actually present that to LaShelle. Um, they're talking about uh, uh, having a standardized facade for businesses that come in for new construction in the town.
Um, so we have architectural review. Um, many years ago, we had a plan that talked about the elements that we would like to see. Not that we want every building to be carpet color. And um, so we will get that for you. I don't think there could be strict rules unless you want all the buildings to be exactly the same.
Right.
Um.
I, and, and I definitely, I don't think that's the, my intent in that question. But um, and Dunkirk is the closest example I think I, I have of that. There's probably others that I'm just not familiar with close by. Wilm, Williamsburg maybe, um, where there's a theme. So that whether it's limestone or red brick, but then there's some element that kind of ties the buildings together. That's.
We do not have that.
Okay.
Um, like I said, the, the old downtown plan, but that was late nineteen ninety-eight. And for a long time, I think a lot, the board felt that, not this board, but previous boards, that everything had to be brick, for instance. But we've kind of gotten away from that. There's some really nice looking buildings that are working in town. But I mean, we, we've retained the architectural review, but we don't have specific rules about.
Gotcha.
What they ought to be.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir, your, your question.
Okay, so there was fewer spaces, I think. Did you say you lost three or four spaces and then added them to the drive-through?
Right, so this area right here, when we did the original site plan, these, this angle parking was a little less steep.
Gotcha.
And because of that, because we had just one way through here with all of our queuing in this area. So we figured that we could get straight through. The planning commission at the time did not like that. They wanted the ability in case it queued beyond the eighteen to get around them and keep circulation.
Gotcha.
And because of that, we kicked back up.
Now, if it did go past, further past that, would it just go into kind of up here? Where would the, where would the line go?
You know, I wish, yeah, that, that's one of those things. It's like birdie catch. You can't tell traffic what to do for the most part. There, it depends on which direction they come from.
Yep. But that, that, um, that's north, right? So it goes right into the new birdie?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
If they came from birdies, it would queue that direction.
Gotcha, okay. And then there's a space, and my apologies for, for being, you know, not up to speed on all of this, but the um, what I'm looking at here at the top part, that's coming out of birdies.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll have just an end here, one area to come out of birdies. Cause now there's that one way, right? Where people are supposed to come out of birdies? And there's, so there's going to be a one-way out of birdies and then a one-way in on Washington?
Yes.
In addition to this? Okay.
I think there's, there's two down there as well. I think there's.
There's still two and then birdies lot.
Yep.
And then there'll be this one.
Okay.
So it's the same number that's there today. It's just that this one is going to be going into Dairy Queen instead of.
Gotcha. And, and then when you move down to um, the um, Dunkin' Donuts, then we have those, that one as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right, thanks, sir.
That's it?
That's it?
Okay, and let's see, I do have one question right on the, on the topic where you just were. My question is about the seventeen point thirty-three feet, the narrow area.
Mm-hmm.
So up a little further?
Yes.
The other way, where the green butt out is.
Right here?
Right here.
Right there, just below it.
Right here.
Mm-hmm.
When we suggested, you know, um, making it so a car could go around, we thought that you were going to have to like shave that abutment so a, a large, like a truck could fit through. They're pretty wide and long. Can a truck parked in drive-through, say it's backed up to there, be circumvented by another truck?
When you're slow like this, it could happen if it's parked. I mean, typically two parking spots, eight feet wide each is, or even nine feet wide, you know, eighteen feet. So it should have enough room to get through. It may be tight, yes, but the, it's still there.
Okay. Yeah, and then when parked diagonally at the nine-foot line?
Yes.
Some of those trucks are really long, but that's a handicap spot, so.
That's any given spot. Yeah, you're right, there's a word, large trucks that goof up the equation, but uh, I don't think, um, you know, you want those people parked elsewhere. You want them to be considerate about what they're driving, but it doesn't always happen.
Yeah, and I, there's no way to remove that, that plant? Where you have tree, there's trees there and all kinds of bushes.
You think it could be striped, it could be removed and striped. The problem is, is that you tend to have people with it striped like that, cut that corner and you, uh, and you get cars hit and stuff like that.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It's kind of there as protection for the parking.
Okay, yeah, cause you had considered moving it, cause I think that this is a nice.
I, it, the, the, the area has been widened and the radius has been enlarged, but we kept the planner. I mean, it, it can disappear, but it's just, it could be a conflict, it could be a lot.
Okay. So you thought, feel like it's more of a problem to remove it than to keep it and then people can?
It depends. You know, it should be slowed back and we will do that. It's owner preference, I would say, I mean.
Would you feel a little?
Try to protect the parking on the corner or something like that a lot of times. Cause they're coming in out of birdies and they're making that turn. Try to get to the drive-through, we'll go out in that way if you don't want that.
Do you think a couple of feet would be better?
Mm-hmm. Um, if you shave it, make it rectangle, you kick, cut off the abutment, you know, the, so if you just drew a line straight here, like right there, get rid of that part. Then you, I do see what you're saying about if you come closer over here, you come very close to, somebody may be walking.
Mm-hmm. So what part would you like cut off again, that wasn't clear? So just bring it two feet in? So we increased the seventeen thirty-three to nineteen?
To eighteen, you could even do it to eighteen, probably.
I don't see that being a problem.
Yeah, I mean, at least the tree itself though, because I mean, first of all, there requires certain like trees. I know they have a lot more landscaping than you have to have, but at the same time, you're really, that's very visual from Washington Street.
Right.
So it does soften it a lot. And you always love trees.
I love trees, but.
I know, I.
But we're, we're talking eight years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, if you make it a little bit narrow, or maybe that would be, would answer what you're asking for.
Yeah, and you, the tree could move back anyway because you don't want it growing out to the, you don't want it blocking what people are looking at. I don't, it's just a suggestion, cause I hear your concern about if you back it up too much, then you could run over somebody getting out of their, a handicap vehicle. You don't want to do that.
So typically it's, this is on purpose to protect your parking.
Yeah, and you don't want to hit a car. Okay. Just a suggestion. All right, um, are there any more questions, comments? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the request for case number eighty-three twenty-one Final Site Plan and Architectural Plan Approval for a twenty-six sixty-two square foot Dairy Queen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Yes, thanks. Onto the case number forty-seven twenty-two, Southern Maryland Orthopedics Concept Site Development Plan, adjusted parcel number two, plat seventy-two forty-two. Request for concept site plan approval for sixty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-two square foot medical office facility and a five thousand square foot daycare center to support medical staff. Leonard's Grant Parkway and Hollywood Road is the location.
Thank you. So this is case number forty-seven dash twenty-two, as you said, Southern Maryland Orthopedics, adjusted parcel two, plat seventy-two forty-two. As you said, the property is located at the northwest corner of Leonard's Grant Parkway and the west side of Hollywood Road, Maryland two forty-five. The owner is requesting concept approval for sixty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-two square foot medical facility and a five thousand square foot daycare facility. The owner is Charles B. Hayden Trustee. The client is Southern Maryland Orthopedics and Sports Medicine. The property is lo, is tax map thirty-two, grid twelve, parcel three forty. The land area is eight point two one acres and the property is zone commercial office. The subject property, again, is located at the northwest corner of Leonard's Grant Parkway, west side of Hollywood Road, Maryland two forty-five. The property consists of eight point two one acres. The existing property is currently vacant. The current condition of the property is field grass with an existing stormwater management facility along Leonard's Grant Parkway. The client is proposing a sixty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-two square foot building that will house medical office space in a two-story section connected by a lobby to a surgical center. The proposed project will have a separate five thousand square foot daycare facility for employees of the medical facility. The proposed site is required to have two hundred and forty-six parking spaces as required by chapter one fifty-five dash fifty-five, chart B of the town zoning code. The American Disabilities with, uh, American, the Americans with Disabilities Act, Part Thirty-Six, Appendix A, requires seven handicap spot, spaces. The site plan is proposing a total of two hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces, which includes twenty-six handicaps spaces. The proposed parking lot exceeds, exceeds requirements by forty-three parking spaces. The storm, the, to address stormwater management, the site plan is proposing an expansion of the existing stormwater management facility to accommodate the impervious surface created by the proposed infrastructures. The site is proposing to tie into existing Leonard Town Water and Sewer System along Leonard's Grant Parkway, per Town Landscape, Landscaping and Zoning Code, Chapter one fifty-five at fifty-four. The site is required to have ten percent of the impervious surface for parking, uh, access aisles, access, excuse me, access drives, aisles and walkways and landscaping. The total proposed impervious surface for this site is two, two hundred and eight thousand ten square feet. This area would require approximately twenty thousand eight hundred and one square foot of landscaping. The proposed site development plan has proposed thirty-one thousand five hundred square foot of landscaping. The site has three proposed entrances. This, there is a proposed entrance on Maryland two forty-five Hollywood Road. This entrance will be a right turn only into the proposed site and a right turn only exiting the site. The second entrance is located on Leonard's Grant Parkway. This entrance will be a full access entrance with the ability to enter and exit by turning left or right. The third entrance is proposed at the rear of the site adjacent to the proposed daycare facility and it joins and appears to be utilizing existing asphalt road constructed for lot two, the property of the Board of County Commissioners. Said property also known as Leonard Town Library. The third proposed entrance will need to obtain all necessary permits from the county commissioners to utilize the existing asphalt road along the western pro, property line. The proposed project was presented to town council on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two to approve seventeen EDUs for the proposed medical for s, facility and daycare in accordance with ordinance number one thirty-two, section two D, as a public health, welfare and safety benefit to the citizens of Leonard Town and St. Mary's County. The council approved the allocation of the seventeen. The council approved the allocation of the seventeen EDUs and sign, and, and signed the town council minutes on January ninth, twenty twenty-three. The site development plan was submitted to Saint Mary's County Department of Public Works and Transportation for review on November first, twenty twenty-two. DP, DPWNT had seven minor comments that needed to be addressed for concept site plan approval. State Highway provided an email dated January ninth, twenty twenty-three stating that they have no objection to the reference project going to the town planning commission. The town planning and zoning department issued concept review comments on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The town planning and zoning department has reviewed the revised concept plan and finds that the project is adequately addressed minimum requirements for concept approval subject to DPWNT's final approval. Preliminary architectural plans have been provided for re, review. However, no action is required at this time for concept approval. The action needed today, the applicant is requesting concept site plan approval for the Southern Maryland Orthopedics Medical Facility and Daycare Facility. The planning and zoning commission can vote to approve, approve with conditions, delay or deny. And we have representatives from the Orthopedics Center here, as well as the consultant, and I believe they have also a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Good afternoon, um, my name's Dave Russo. Uh, I have someone here who has Leonard Town, who has an adult and another child. I'm voting it all through, uh, as part of the chess game, so I'm glad to be back. I'm, uh, calling, uh, what the, uh, the doctors now, uh, involved in building. We're acting as an only representative to assist them and wait with the necessary steps to help, uh, this project improve. So I'm, uh, both of, both of the adult compromise, uh, to, uh, to run through myself. I'll be behind the scenes with waiting throughout this process and always available, um, to discuss any issues that may come up. Hopefully, my, being able to introduce the true actual sponsors of the, and owners of the site and who will be, uh, running this all.
Yeah, so Peter Johnston, um, one of the partners at St. Revise with the PX, the, uh, Southern Maryland PX Division. And here with my partner, Dr. Lucas Weimar. And Dr. Daniel Belk. Just want to thank you all for taking the time to, to hear about what we are proposing and for, for, and not to be redundant, but just to give you some overview of our vision. It's basically a medical facility, uh, providing work, care to members of our community. With basically everything encompassed under one roof, so ambulatory, surgery center, outpatient care, rehab facility, imaging. So patients can stop in, see a physician with a knee pain, knee injury or something like that. Be sent down quickly to have the U V G'd, be introduced to a rehab, uh, professional, started in physical therapy, MRI review, things like that. So it's a very efficient way for members of our community to, uh, receive medical care, uh, similar to what they do in many, many big cities. So again, the vision is a one-stop orthopedic shop where we can provide care to members of our community. It'll accomplish several things, uh, job creation, number one, and new proposed, uh, construction of a, uh, daycare facility on the back end of the property specifically in home for our employees, uh, children, uh, for daycare. Secondly, uh, a facility like this will improve our ability to recruit top-tier physicians to come to our community. And our growing community provide the kind of best care, best-in-class care that you can get for orthopedic physicians. Um, and then, uh, secondly, just improve like the access to. That would be kind of the reason why we're going to go. And how we can take any questions beyond that.
Okay, Nick, did you have a presentation first?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll s- we'll hold our, unless you wanna.
Can you see it from there?
Okay. Uh, we can s- uh, well, can you slide?
So just starting, Saint Mary's County Downtown Leonard Town. You can see we're located north of the Route Five intersection on Maryland Route two forty-five. The site here is located at the corner of Leonard's Grant Parkway and Maryland two forty-five. The green line I just brought up there is the limit, corporate limits of the town of Leonard Town. That side is regulated by the town of Leonard Town, the other side by Saint Mary's County. neighboring uses are of course the library and senior center located behind, which we will try and tie into with the driveway. The north side is a vacant piece of property zone CO, it's the same zoning as the property that we're working on. And also the one north of that, which is MedStar and other medical uses. So this kind of ties in together in this area, similar uses. Here is just a residential once again regulated by the county. The Meadows at Town Run is across the street. Smeco is underneath their new corporate headquarters, their new headquarters. This is county commissioners land vacant zone IO, which is the same zoning as the institutional across the street from, I don't know plans they have for that. But it looks like there's more there. The Duke Elementary School is there. And once again Leonard's Grant subdivision. So you can see the uses in the area and I don't see anything that's truly, you know, incompatible with the proposed use. And of course, another item that maybe you see off to the side is Leonard Town Baptist Church. So at this point, um, I'm gonna bring up the site plan and start leaving you open for questions.
Do we hear any, do you have any questions?
I do, I do have a couple. But I'll wait if you want to.
Oh, go ahead.
For Dr. Johnston, um, so I, I know y'all are, are, uh, uh, operating now in, in different facilities. How, how will this change the way you operate and the, and what's available to, to the public, this facility?
So, so what it would do would be to bring our services here in Leonard Town under one roof. So we have a surgery center, uh, led over by a medicine room. And then we have a PT facility, um, right in that same development. It would bring all those facilities under one roof, so.
So that, um, you described what, what I wasn't sure of is how they're operating now, but, but it's separate and, and this.
So, so based on how we operate now, we, uh, our outpatient office, uh, right there at the Belmont Building. We have a surgery center, the Leonard Town Surgery Center, um, in the Blair Building. And then we have a PT facility in the, I don't know the name, what was it, the shops or what was the name? The, uh, next day's hardware is a.
Shops of Bread and Bread.
Yeah, so that would, those, those facilities would all come under one roof.
The other part of this proposal is to have a radiology imaging center, which is, we currently have in the county, um, separate from the hospitals. Uh, and a pay management, uh, practice separate from our, our clinical practice. Um, also in the space to provide those services to, to, to the, to the county.
So is this gonna be, um, just more efficient, uh, services that you provide or will be more doctors, more services?
So the vision is in, increased efficiency. And then the ability to expand with more providers, more service lines, uh, kind of higher-end imaging modalities, um.
So this as proposed, has expansion capabilities for, for more doctors?
To me having been a patient with, uh, having my shoulder replaced, I, I can see where it would be much more convenient to have a one-stop shop. Instead of bouncing around different places as necessary as I would do treatment. So first one I, 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 I'm, I'm all for it.
I'm gonna have another one, but I'll let someone else go first, I don't wanna, I think so, I'll let me steal one, you're thunder one.
Oh, that's all right.
Would you interact with the hospital? And if so, in what ways?
So we, we interact every day with the hospital. We bring our patients there, we, uh, use their operating room, which are currently just absolutely stretched at the seams in terms of capacity. And then the cap- nursing capacity on the floor is absolutely stretched at the seams as well. So we would continue our relationship with hospital, take a call with the hospital, um, and provide care using, you know, their services that they offer us.
The ambulatory surgery center, that's gonna be part of this entire campus? And, um, so ambulance is bringing somebody in that needs some imaging? You can handle that, like a triage situation or would that go to the ER and then? I'm just thinking, I just had a friend who went to the hospital with a terrible, terrible leg break. And they couldn't get very, I mean, great imagery here. They sent him to Washington, which happens all the time, right? Um, and then he bounced around for another day and a half before they could figure out exactly how to, uh, fix his leg.
Yeah, I mean, so, so obviously there's different levels of therapy that we have to be scared of. I mean, if someone's being pulled out of a morgue, be a collision, put an ambulance, more likely than not, they're gonna be going to the hospital. I would say our services would cater more toward the athlete that injured themselves at Reichen. Uh, the football game on Thursday night could be seen in our office on Friday. Uh, we, we probably wouldn't have an ambulance, uh, ax- accessible. This is more outpatient imaging and things of that nature.
Gotcha, the, um.
The vision being, I'm sorry, Sean.
Yeah, yeah, no.
The vision also being is that we could recruit that top-tier baby trauma physician to be down there. I mean, cases like the cases that are being shipped up the road to, um, Washington DC to Baltimore, so.
Awesome, thank you. Um, another question. The daycare, you said it was just for the people in the, this facility?
That, that's our vision, kind of, a- at this point, yeah.
No spillover or? Okay, and, um, would there be some sort of restaurant in this building?
So there, a- a- as in its current design, there's kind of a cafe set up for our employees. And then anyone who needs to stop off at Leonard's Park, you know, Leonard's Grant Parkway to grab a coffee on the way out.
But also for people that wait for the family, who is in, is in surgery, they get a coffee, um, while they're, you know, waiting for their MRI or waiting for their, you know, family members in surgery.
So within the plan, there's a lot of thousand square feet set up for a cafe to get very specific.
Which would be retail and potentially a third-party provider.
Gotcha, okay.
But the daycare would be strictly for the employees and manage in-house and, and not a retail.
And how many employees total for this place, anticipated?
Uh, currently, we are at a hundred, close to a hundred employees in all of our facilities. So I'd probably say, um, between a hundred and a hundred and fifty would be accurate.
And children would be dropped off and, because you have other locations that won't be consolidated there?
Is it tr- children when we drop off?
So some of the children and employees may work at other facilities, right? Or is it only working in that building?
Yeah, no, I, so, so that would be available to providers and, and our staff working on it themselves.
Okay.
I guess the question is, are you consolidating everything under one roof or not?
So, yeah, and maybe that is where we started with this. We will maintain our, the, uh, PT office in California as well as in Waldorf. But we will be consolidating everything here in Leonard Town.
Okay, so it's really not that many, if, if somebody was to drop off children and then go onto Wildwood, it's really not that many people that would be doing that?
Yeah, and, and, and we've, we've thought about that, trying to kind of project what, what we would need to be able to accommodate in terms of children at the time. We've talked to our younger staff members and I think we're thinking maybe anywhere fifteen, twenty children or max, and so.
Okay.
It's currently sized for more.
Most of the, 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 it's like a.
Yeah, well, it's a nice benefit, that's for sure.
That's our vision.
And I would just add, while it's commercial office zoning, within our commercial office zoning, you are allowed to have retail. Um, it just has to be less than twenty-five percent of this roof, so that certainly, even if they had someone else running a thousand square foot cafes, it is allowed, so.
And then I think it was briefed, but is it, um, shit, I was looking at, um, aerial GPS, I think it's, what is that, Hayden? That, um, that asphalt that's in between this building and the library, basically it's gonna be blended so that it kind of complements each other, right?
I'm not sure, the question, I mean, which is.
Can you go back?
I think he's talking about the road that comes up through the library?
That's, that's right, on the west side.
So the one, on, yes, on the east side of the senior center and the library, on the west, or the, yeah, the west side of our site. Yes, we're just looking at time to that, it just made sense to have some cross connectivity.
Absolutely.
Like Mike pointed out, we're still gonna have to get buy-in from the county. DPW has no objections at this point. I believe they would be the gateway or the gatekeeper or something like that.
I, I think.
But yeah, we do, as, as we progress, we're gonna need to, you know, get approvals for that. Um, it just makes sense to do that.
Absolutely, I mean, with the, especially with the daycare on that side, I mean, they could fill over to the library and.
It's a walking.
Hang out of the library, absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, but that's great.
Seated, uh, seated yoga injury and the, uh, surgery, the senior center could be, uh.
Absolutely.
So, um, this is a big, monacious building. Um, it, it kind of complements what's there already with the, the, the library and the senior center. Um, to me, on the site plan, it, it's really crying for more trees. You know, it, it, you know, we're a rural county, rural town, uh, and, and this is gonna be really visible. Um, there are some trees shown, but, but.
That's just a shading pattern. It's showing areas for landscaping and it shows that we've met our requirements for landscaping. Um, we, and as we go through this, we will have some more specific plans showing trees and other plantings. And your input now is helpful for us as we move forward with something that you would find more provable.
At the end of the game.
Yeah, I think that'll be really important to have, to have, uh, lots of good-sized trees. So this kind of blends in with, with what's around it, besides the.
There's an action item on every meeting with the architect, uh, green space and how we will incorporate that in the building. So patients that have places to walk and.
Yeah, Doug, those areas in between the parking spots that are designated as such as microbioretention facilities. All those are required to have specific plantings as far as trees, shrubs and grasses entirely within those microbioretention facilities. So there'll be quite a few trees planted in those alone with shrubbery and things of that nature.
Okay. Yeah, I'm particularly thinking, uh, the buffer between the main road and the buildings, uh, along here would be important.
Okay.
Yes.
And we had mentioned that they brought like actually this was a kind of a preliminary.
Yeah, um.
For, for actions today, we're just saying if, if we have to comment on it.
We're kind of looking for some input too here because we're at a juncture where we're trying to decide, you know, what architectural facade we're gonna go with. And we're down to two, so, um, this is the first, this is the wind, correct? And, uh, this would be looking at the building from Leonard, Leonard's Grant Parkway. And you'd be looking at the, uh, medical office building there, the big two story and the tall atrium would be the, uh, uh, open space like the restaurant and whatnot, or the, not the rest, the cafe. And, uh, just an atrium there. This would be looking at the building from, almost at the intersection of, uh, uh, two forty-five Leonard Grant Parkway. So you're looking to the right, the ambulatory surgery center. To the left would be the medical office building. And this would be the front looking at it from Hollywood Leonard Town Road. And it does somewhat resemble the library through the in there, just so you have that for a reference, so it, it's similar but different. The other one is called The Woods. And it's a little different look, you can see, not as much glass. Same views, this one's once again from five and, uh, from, sorry, two forty-five and, uh, Leonard Grant Parkway. Once again, medical office to the left and ambulatory surgery to the right. And finally, this would be the front looking at it from Hollywood Leonard Town Road. So we were just looking for your thoughts on the different styles of what you thought.
We had a number of versions and we're putting together and, uh, the team has narrowed it down to these two. And while, uh, before landing on the, on the final version, uh, the thought would be to share. There's a thing on both, to see if there's any major concerns or feedback, uh, that at the moment would be to take one of these two directions. With some, uh, some designs being brought from here.
Mike, were all, were all these pictures in the, uh, what you sent, are they in the else you sent us?
No. Um, for the most part, they are though.
Okay, I didn't remember seeing.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, I don't know, I probably thought they were the same, cause the last page.
No, they are different.
Yeah, so that looks nice for this building and nice for the front.
That's.
That's not hard, is it?
Not.
That's my answer.
Any comments or concerns on that?
Um, do you have any more questions on?
My only thought on that first, first building is, um, go back to the first line.
And we are leaning in this direction.
Um, go back a couple, right there. So that left side is west, right?
Yes.
So that's gonna get very hot in the summertime. I mean, that's a direct shot as the sun's coming down. Um, that's my only thought there, but I'm sure that there's gonna be a lot of air conditioning in there, but that's where the daycare is gonna be as well, right?
No, the daycare is a separate facility.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe you can get the ways laid out right.
Top left on the west and the purple top left on the west is the daycare.
Gotcha.
See all the buildings are.
You have two, you have two different spots.
Yes.
But it is a very good, uh, point. And, and we certainly, uh, we take that into consideration as we finalize the plans there. So we had, we've had that conversation about the right balance between, you know, glass and the rest of the materials. In that particular, uh, elevation, that does make sense.
I mean, it looks great, I think it's, looks great. And it would, you would be looking at the library, which is another.
Yeah, I remember this. But there's, there, there may be, uh, something like that, 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 that's the amount of glass that are coming down.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll certainly make a note of it for.
Doug, do you have any more questions? My la- I have one thing to add, it could be a question, but it's more probably a statement. If, I couldn't tell from the plans where the entrances on Hollywood Road and Leonard's Grant Parkway align with, on LG Parkway with Smeco and on two forty-five, where are they aligned with Town Run? So I don't have any comment on it, cause I don't know where they are.
Right here is the entrance to Town Run, entrance to the Meadows at Town Run, listed right there specifically. So it's almost straight across, but not quite. The state highway wants the two together, I mean, we've got some flexibility with this section right here. And that'll be negotiated with state highway as we move forward with this.
Okay. Okay. And then on LG Parkway, where is Smeco's entrance?
Yeah, that one's not shown.
Cause it's their big truck.
Can I get a receipt on the air room?
Um, yeah, good point.
And that is the, the Smeco entrance of Leonard Grant Parkway is, uh, employee-owned.
It almost looks like.
But. The, the, the air rails to show them, same ones.
That's it.
No, it doesn't show at the same point.
Hard to, hard to tell without it.
But I do know from seeing out there that this manhole right here is in the return radius. So right here where you see this, you can actually see with the contours where it should, you know, and that would be right here.
Okay, so it's far enough away, cause that's where their trucks go in and out.
Yes.
Right, trucks and employees, that's it.
The other thing with the one on two forty-five, uh, it's right in, right out. So it's not gonna be an intersection there.
Yeah.
As far as Maryland two forty-five is concerned, it's not gonna actually be an intersection, cause you have a turn right in and turn right out only.
And the, and the, and the light's gonna be at Leonard's.
Right here.
Grant, got it.
Which, yes, should definitely help alleviate any traffic concerns you may have about this. I was pleased to hear Michelle say that I heard her mention it before that it was in the works. And I was almost gonna bring it up if it was an issue with traffic, but, uh, it's good to hear it's heard.
I'm sure there's people concerned with traffic, but they, have they, has anybody expressed any concerns about traffic? From the neighborhood, neighbors?
I just heard a little bit of, but they didn't know about the light. So I think someone had spoke up on Facebook about the light, so I just wanted to make sure that people knew that it wasn't official.
Okay, but nothing directly?
No, I am not receiving any comments. And I know the, uh, sidewalk project on two forty-five will continue from, it ends at Manningly Street in front of the government center now. But it does go all the way out to Leonard's Grant Parkway on the west side of all of the road. And then with this new light, they're talking about possibly extending the sidewalk to the Meadows entrance as well. So that people could walk up to the light and cross at the.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
That has not been added to the project at this point, but they're at the discussion with the committee.
As part of the project, we have also proposed to extend sidewalks across the frontage of the property.
Oh, that's very nice, yeah.
And, and based on the timeline of the traffic signal, which is about eighteen months. It'll be underwriting prior to the building, the operation. Our, the, our goal is to be operational by the, late summer of twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I don't think we have any more questions, does anyone have a motion?
Uh, I'm going to approve the request for case forty-seven twenty-two, concept site plan approval for the Southern Maryland Orthopedics Medical Facility and Daycare Facility.
Second?
Third?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Uh, uh, the case number forty-seven twenty-two is passed and thank you very much. Uh, other business, we have the in-house permits. Did anyone have any questions for Michelle or for Mike? And nobody has any questions on these, do you have anything you wanna?
No, I, uh, so as you see in December, uh, we did not have any, uh, new home permits pulled. I just wanted to point that out, but we had multiple, we had four UNOs for, uh, single-family dwellings and two UNOs for townhouses. January's picked up a little bit.
Okay. All right. Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I vote to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.